Former ADA license committee members. That's our separate cell phone number. We're trying to get another one, another cell phone to it. And that's our kind of job.
Welcome, everybody, to our Des Moines City Council meeting. Prior to start of our council meeting tonight, we do have a special proclamation. And I've got Kelly Quinn here that's going to make a couple of statements about National American Heritage Month. Kelly?
Oh, my name is Bemidah Kelly Quinn. I am from the Musquaky Tribe in Tama, Iowa. I just wanted to thank Mayor County and the City Council for recognizing Native American Heritage Month. Mayor, you have really made a welcoming city. I felt very welcome and at home when I moved here from Tama. And I was very surprised to learn that there is approximately 10,000 indigenous or Native American identifying people within the city of Des Moines, which is very cool. So I'm not the only one. But I want to thank you guys for recognizing.
Thank you. Kelly, and for that, thank you for being here. And we have a special proclamation. Our nation celebrates the history of America's and the indigenous peoples' intrinsic connection to this land, their origin stories, and their contribution to the development of our country. And whereas George G.W. Bush signed a joint congressional resolution designating November 1990 as National American Indian Heritage Month, and similar national proclamations have been issued every year since 1994. And whereas Iowa was once home to more than 17 different indigenous tribes, including the Iowa, the Sac, the Fox, the Musquaky, Sioux, Citizen Potawatomi, Bo尼克, Otwa, and Missouri, and whereas there is a need to create in people a consciousness, respect, and endearment for the legacy of indigenous peoples' culture, history, including traditional knowledge, experience, labor, technology, science, philosophy, industry, and art, as well as their cultural belief system that stipulates indigenous people as protectors and stewards of our national environment for the benefit of all and for all of us on this planet. I want to thank you and everyone, all the indigenous people, for that. And whereas Des Moines, which currently is home to nearly 10,000 residents that identify as American Indian or Alaska Native, joins other states and cities across the nation this month to celebrate and honor the unique heritage of this continent's first people. And now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month. And I encourage all of our residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, compassionate, and equitable for all. Kelly, thank you so much for being here. (APPLAUSE). I think they got enough. You got it? Thank you. Hang on one second. You know, I want to say one other thing. I don't have a proclamation for it, but for all of our citizens who served in the armed forces through the years, I want to thank them for their service. I was not here at the last meeting, and so I may have missed it, but I want to thank our veterans, either on staff or citizens of our city or of this state, for their service and dedication to this country. So, thank you all. We're scheduled to start at 5:00, so we've got about two or three minutes. So, everybody relax for a second, and then we'll get going.
(INAUDIBLE).
Mr. Moncrief, you read some of these before, right? Sent this before the study.
Yeah.
increased community transmission of COVID-19 here in Polk County, we have implemented a face covering requirement in our city buildings. And the requirements apply to both the staff and visiting public in attendance at council meetings, and if you do not have a face covering, one will be provided for you. The public is hereby notified that the city council will not tolerate disruption of its business meetings, and persons wishing to attend this meeting are reminded of the following. And these are rules that we have read and modified a couple of times, but almost over a year now, I think, we've been working on this. We welcome germane comments from the public at the appropriate time, but this is a council business meeting, and the council needs to conduct the people's business. And council has rules that are validly adopted under the Iowa law, and those rules will be followed. Anyone engaging in disruptive conduct in the council chambers or the great hall will result in those being disruptive being ordered to leave the building and being denied readmittance for the remainder of the day. No person will be permitted to stand in the council chambers, either beside their seat or on their seat, during council sessions between the audience seats and the council members, except the persons addressing the council at the speaker's microphone, and only after being recognized. So, all persons desiring to address the council may do so when recognized, but the council reserves the right to limit the speaker's time and order in which the speakers may address the council. Under Section 2-70 of the city code, it is illegal to interrupt any person who is addressing the council except by a council member, and it is illegal to disrupt the council meeting. Everyone in attendance has First Amendment rights, and any disruptive conduct by one person or group impinges on the rights of others who are present. So disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. If the meeting is disrupted, the public speaking portion of the meeting may be moved to the next in-person meeting, which is not disrupted. Those who disrupt the meeting will not be called on during the meeting, will be ordered to leave the building, and may be cited or arrested for disorderly conduct, trespass, or interfering with the good order of the meeting, or any other applicable charges. So I just want to make sure that those rules are in place. It's now 5:01, so let's get started. I'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
All right. Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Note alterations, none on the consent agenda tonight. The regular items, 32 to 47. Item 45 is corrected and amended. The ordinance was amended and correction made for clarification. That is the only one unless anybody has anything else?
I move item 2.
6B pulled.
That's...
That's on consent.
Okay.
So, all right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing, none. Item 2 is passed. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items 3 through 31. And these are generally routine items and will be enacted by one roll called vote without separate discussion unless someone, either a council member or a public... If a public person wants to pull an item, it would require a majority vote of the council to pull that particular item. The request, an item be removed to be considered separately. So, with that, there are no consent items that are out. Does anybody have any?
Yeah, there's a few.
All right. Here's an updated one. 6B, Councilmember Westergaard wishes to speak. Item 22, Councilmember Gatto wishes to speak. And item 27I, Councilmember Gatto wishes to speak. Are there any others, council?
Did the clerk hear from anyone?
Thank you. I'll do that. Clerk, are there any requests for any of the other items from the public to be removed for discussion?
No, Your Honor.
All right.
I'll move it.
Item's been moved, and I'll ask everybody to please vote.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Go to hearing. Just so everybody understands, we're going to move straight to hearings, and then we'll come back to these items that were requested to be pulled. So our first hearing item is item 32, but prior to that, it's... I want to again go over some of the rules. For the hearings this evening, we have one zoning item, which is item 32. We also have a vacation hearing and several conveyance hearings, one restated urban revitalization plan, a lease amendment, and a lease purchase hearing, and one public improvement hearing. As a reminder for that zoning item, which is item 32, we will hear from the parties in interest and first, and then the public. So the parties in interest are the applicant or those persons living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, to whom the city has sent a notice. After all the parties in interest have commented on it, we will open it up to any member of the public for germane comments. To aid in recognizing the parties in interest to the zoning item speak, I will ask everyone else to not step up to the microphone unless they are the zoning applicant or live within that 250 feet, and receive that mailed notice for the rezoning. Anyone who approaches the mic before it is their time will be compared with that mailed list, and if not on the list, will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting and will be required to leave the building. So I please ask that until I call for the general public for the zoning item, that you will not be called on if you violate that for the remainder of the meeting, and again will be required to leave. After all the parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will be asked to comment, yet not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes, and will be called upon for germane comment unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane comments, or when the comment ceases. For the other hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments, yet not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing item, unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure either to make germane comments or the comment cease. As a reminder, on the public improvement hearings, only comments as to the plans, specifications, form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate, and the low bidder designation will be considered germane. All other comments will be considered non-german unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane comments. And for the continuance, no public comment will be had at this meeting, and all public comment will come at each continued public hearing when it is rescheduled. So, let's start right in. First item is item 32, which is on a request from Wesley Life to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow future land use designation for 3206 University Avenue and 1117 and 1119 33rd Street, from low-density residential and low-medium-density residential to community mixed-use, and to rezone the property from P2 Public Civic and Institutional District to limited MX3 mixed-use district to allow use of the existing building at 3206 University for mixed-of uses, including a restaurant, limited fabrication production use, and allow expansion of the existing parking lot into the parcels at 1117 and 1119 33rd Street. This is the first consideration of this ordinance, and again, parties and interests. We will ask now, again, that's the applicant or anybody that lives within 250 feet of the property to whom has received a notice to speak. And then after that, we'll ask for germane comments from the general public, one minute per person to speak, up to seven minutes maximum. So, again, on this item regarding Wesley Life to amend Plan DSM, we will ask, are there any parties in interest in the audience this evening? Either the applicant or one who received notice within 250 feet. Seeing none, I'll ask, are there any germane comments to be made from the general public regarding this Wesley request? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move this item. This is going to allow for the expansion of Wesley's Meals on Wheels program, and it's a great use. They cooperated with Drake University, the neighborhood, so I'm happy to see this. They're also going to get a restaurant built. Or a restaurant is part of this project, so that will add another amenity on top of that. And I believe that they work to address some neighborhood concerns with the property as well, and my understanding is all that has been worked out. So I am happy to move item 32, 32A, and pursuant to Rule 42B, waive the second and third reading.
All right. County?
Yes.
42A?
Sorry, 42A, sorry, if I said...
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
In relation to item 32 and 32A.
Rule 42A.
Rule 42A, right?
Yeah, exactly. All right. Item 43 is on a conveyance of vacated city alley located east of and adjoining 915 23rd Street to Maria Rodriguez for $25. Germane comments from the general public, one minute per person to speak. Are there any that would like to make comments on this conveyance to Maria? Anyone?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 33.
All right. Item 33 has been moved.
Both in the house.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item 34 is on a conveyance of vacated city alley located east of and adjoining 905 23rd Street to Gregory P. Brown, again for $25. Again, any germane comments from the general public? Up to one minute and five minutes maximum. Anybody want to speak regarding 905 23rd Vacated City Alley to Gregory Brown? Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 34.
Item 34 has been moved.
Both in the house.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item 35 is on a conveyance of excess city-owned property locally known as 2411, 2501, and 2505 Sunset Road, and District Parcels 010/05229-000-000, and 010/05230-000-000, to Midwest Quality Wholesale, Inc., for $133,200, Council Communication Number 21-492. And we'll ask for any germane comments from the general public regarding this excess property that is being transferred for $133,200.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 35.
Item 35 has been moved.
Both in the house.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item 36, on a proposed lease purchase agreement in the principal amount of not to exceed $54,455, for the purpose of acquiring equipment consisting of a Ford E-Transit cargo van 350 electric vehicle. Germane comments on this item from the public, up to one minute, five minutes maximum. Anyone to speak on this item? Seeing none?
Seeing none. I'm happy to move this item, item 36. Appreciate staff's effort to keep looking at alternative vehicles when those options are available and to present those to council.
County?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 37 is items regarding fourth restated urban revitalization plan for the citywide urban revitalization area. Council Communication Number 21-504. A is a public hearing and approval of the fourth restated urban revitalization plan for citywide urban revitalization area. B is a first consideration of an ordinance to amend Municipal Code Section 135-2.11, Figures 135-2.11A, 135-2.11-B, 135-2.11-C, 135-2.11-D, and Tables 135-2.1-1, and 135-2.1-2, relating to Flat A and Flat B Building Types and Regulations. C is the final consideration of the ordinance above and the waiver is requested by our Development Service Director and requires six votes. Again, we'll open it up for any germane comments from the general public regarding this urban revitalization plan citywide revitalization area. Looks like we have one speaker here. Yes, go ahead.
My name's Carol Hunter. I live in North Bridge. City Code 50312. I asked the city manager's office, and he referred me to someone in economic development regarding some of the questions I had on this program, which has been in place since 1987. I'm sure you've all read it. It's quite long. There's lots of flowery verbiage about affordable housing, how these programs are going to bring on affordable housing. Unfortunately, I couldn't find a text and would love to hear where it's at. There's no requirement for anyone to provide affordable housing. There's no definition of affordable housing, and there's nothing in the taxpaying program that says a certain amount of your units have to be, quote-unquote, affordable. Am I doing something wrong?
Oh, sorry. Try not to touch the microphone. Do I need to start over?
Nope, you're fine.
No, my clock is already now gone. When I asked how the changes were determined for this program, I was told that the city manager, as well as... manager, as well as the council and the mayor, had requested these changes. When I said, how was it determined that these changes should be made? What financials did you use? What numbers did you look at? I asked several times, several people. It doesn't appear to me there are any numbers. Maybe they're being held in the back office in finance somewhere, but it seems to me for a program that's giving away an awful lot of tax dollars, there should be numbers to see how it's going to impact us. I'm someone, as you know, that's newly moved to town. I was a sucker in about a hundred-year-old house, and the guys in the new condos aren't paying taxes for 10 years. I'm sorry.
Okay. Scott, any comment?
Just my understanding is that the historical numbers have been provided?
Yes.
Okay, well, they're available, so we can get those too.
Okay.
I would give you two different. I would like to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I voted against this when we were setting the date of hearings, and I will vote for it tonight. I think that everything in here is good, but it doesn't do enough. And it still bothers me, when I sat in this council in 2015, and we came up with a spider web map for large apartment complexes, which we know are affordable housing, and in order for affordable housing to be built today, they have to use tax credits, they have to use tax abatement. That's the only way they can make the numbers work, because it costs, you know, thousands of dollars to build each individual unit. To me, it feels like it's another way to redline. We're saying we're only going to put affordable housing, which affordable housing has a definition of somebody who lives there is 80% of the median income. So, it seems to me that we're still saying, we're only going to, we're only going to put affordable housing in these certain spider webs, and that doesn't feel right to me. It just simply doesn't, it doesn't feel right. And since 2015, I don't think we've had a lot of affordable housing built on these corridors. So what it equates to is that we're not providing the affordable housing that we need in our city. When we talk about tax abatement for single-family homes, I asked, who did we have? Because when we set the date, I was told, we're going to reach out to all these builders. And Erin did send me the list of the developers, but a developer is not a home builder. HBA tells me they never had a conversation. I called up several builders, and they said, no, we've never had a conversation. What we're doing is we're helping the suburbs build houses that people can go and buy that are affordable, because they certainly can't afford it in Des Moines. And tax abatement, they still pay taxes on the land. So if you have a vacant piece of land, you're still going to get all the taxes for that. But when we have homes built, it takes more than 1,000 pairs of hands to build a house. That's jobs, that is employment, that is people that are coming into our city who may then decide to build. And we're now sending them away, because we're putting so many things into our tax abatement, which are all good, I get that, but we're reducing the tax abatement. I would be okay with everything that's in here, even the car chargers, the 2-by-6 construction, but we're taking tax abatement away from people that need it when they are buying a house. So I'll support it, but we're not doing enough, and we're not making it so people can come in and have a new home in our city.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
So, I agree with some of what Linda said, and then there are other areas where I'm maybe in a different spot. You know, I would certainly like us to think about how we can, particularly with the multifamily, help encourage more places where we provide abatement to help facilitate more low-income and affordable housing. I know this has been focused on our transit corridors, and I think that is appropriate and important, but I think we maybe could identify a slightly higher mix of places where that might be an option. I think it's an appropriate change for us to be dialing back the amount of abatement. I think over time, I think we were providing too much abatement in some of these cases. And I also don't think that we are asking enough of, enough as part of this. And I actually have a concern, we have a couple environmental pieces from a sustainability perspective. I was actually disappointed in terms of what that looks like, because I don't think that's consistent with some of our other policies. And I would actually like us to amend this to go farther. I think we have set goals as a council to have a 2050 net zero approach, 2050 net zero for our emissions and climate goals. Any building that is going to be getting tax abatement under this revised policy, I'm assuming is going to be around in 2050, and is going to be part of how we do or do not meet that goal. And we should be considering our policy with that in mind. We know that we cannot get to net zero with continued use of fossil fuels in our buildings. I think if we are going to continue to provide incentives, which are optional, tax abatement is an optional incentive, that we should be moving towards all-electric, all-electric construction. And I think that should be a condition of future, future abatement. So I would actually like to either, well, I will move to amend if we're going to go forward with that today, or I'd move to delay so that we can consider all-electric, a requirement for all-electric in the, in any of the buildings for new construction. I don't think for rehabilitation, I don't think we need to go there yet. The efficiency requirements, I think, are probably sufficient, but I would like us, for our abatement, to go, to take a step and move towards all-electric. And so that would be, that would be my motion for consideration tonight.
And I would not go with that. I don't think we're ready for all-electric. I think if we went, we would have to go back and visit with builders and with others to learn more about that. So I'm not willing, I would not vote for that.
Josh, I appreciate a lot of the things that you said. I don't know enough about some of the things that you talked about. I would agree that we probably would need some more information about, the majority of us have gas furnaces in our home. I think that's one thing that the majority of folks do have in their house. I don't know what the ramifications of asking people to have just electric heaters in their house. So I would definitely like to have some more information about that. Cost-wise, what is the cost per what gas is going to cost them to run it on an annual basis? Some of those things. Going back to a couple of things that Linda had talked about with the spider map and the multifamily, we changed the tax abatement as a right to have tax abatement for multifamily housing, because the neighbors asked us to. The neighbors didn't want anywhere that there was a land parcel that they can go build an apartment complex on, and we would automatically give them tax abatement, then they would take that tax abatement and use it as a credit to get IFA tax credits. That's why that was changed in 2015 for that reason, because they were using that, not, they used that automatically as an incentive from the city to say, yes, we don't care where you're building that, and we don't care how many you build, it can be in the middle of a neighborhood, and we are, and they applied for IFA tax credits, which are state tax credits, and they used our abatement to get that. That's why that map was changed. So let's not lose sight that we had a year of meetings with neighbors that came to us and said, can you please stop that? They're inundating our neighborhoods, and they're changing our neighborhoods. It's different on some corridors, on transit routes. If we want to go back and revisit some of those, I'm fine with that, but when you want to open it up again for tax abatement wherever, and you can build 11 and 12 complexes, that is not fair, first of all, for the people that live there. They should be surrounded with a mixed use, and I think we should focus more on mixed use where, whether it be low-income and other incomes are grouped together, I don't think anyone should be living low-income with 12 or 13 units altogether in one area. I will never agree to that, I think that's absolutely wrong, and I just, I don't, I don't think that's right. So that's where that change come from, and I don't want anyone to lose sight of that.
I don't think that's true anymore, though, Joe.
Well, it is true. You have lots of them on Hubble, up and down Hubble, and that's where it started.
But IFA doesn't use that as a condition. They stopped doing that quite a while ago.
I understand.
2015, you wanted tax abatement, you wanted to do multifamily housing across, on spider maps. Hubble Avenue still has transit, but they don't get tax abatement. We have other areas in town, and I don't think of it as low-income, I think of it as affordable housing. Many of us are at the 80% of the median area income. That is just a normal income. The affordable housing that is in my area, I would imagine, there are a lot of them are retired seniors that just aren't working, but they're right there from the neighborhood.
Senior housing and affordable housing are two different things. You're talking about, you're talking about two different things, and the neighbors would agree with, when you come to them with a senior housing project, they act, the neighborhood associations are definitely, act different when you, when you, when a developer comes and wants to do a senior housing project with multiple units than any other. I have my share, and I've supported them throughout the entire southeast port of town as I've been on this council and even before. But as you go around and you talk to the neighborhood associations, that is their number-one goal, that, you know what, we need to spread it out, it needs to go in the suburbs, and it needs to go to other places. And that's what we've talked about, and we've talked about it in 2015, and we can talk about it till we're blue in the face here, and we can continue to discuss it. But, I mean, I, going back to Josh's, I can't support that right now, Josh, because I don't have enough information. If we want to, if we want to continue this until we sit down and have a workshop and we talk a little bit more about what is affordable as far as gas and electric, what works, what doesn't work, I would be interested in hearing that, those things, before I can support that.
I mean, I'd be willing to modify this to do a workshop and to continue this until such a workshop is done.
Or we can sit there and just vote on A and B and not pass C till we get more information.
I think, I think this change would have to go in A, if I'm correct. So we couldn't pass A, we could pass B.
It will be better, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll let you go first.
Just to clarify, I think if you want to make substantive change to the ordinance, you'll need to continue the hearing.
Yep.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend passing A or B either, if you would just.
Or C.
Especially not C.
And we really had a lot of meetings where we brought in to talk about this. You know, we have whole neighborhoods that were all-electric back in the early '70s, and it was very expensive, and it was harder to sell those houses. I mean, people did not care for the all-electric, they liked their gas. So I don't know that we would get that. I do know that we have somebody in the audience, could we allow a nonprofit to talk? I'd like to hear what she thinks about it. I know we've closed that, but.
You want to reopen it, so let's have a move to reopen.
I would reopen, I would move to reopen.
Okay, all in favor, say hi.
Frank, I'd like to speak.
Okay, and then Connie, we'll let the public speak, and then you're up next. I will tell you on this issue, I don't know how many days everybody has on this, but I've got an opinion on, on performance and how it leads to, as Josh said, where we are with 2050 requirements, meaning net zero, and trying to do it even before that. And quite frankly, to me, this is about the future of this country, of this planet, of this state, and we need to be leaders. And this is a huge issue. So go ahead.
So, thank you, I apologize. The discussion led me to want to share some things. My name's Stephanie Murphy, I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Finance, and I also live in Des Moines. So, as a developer, I agree with the energy efficiency. We, as an organization, have been looking for ways, both in our development, as well as in our single-family lending, to do that. So I have, I agree with your statement. I just want to point out, on affordable, when you're rebuilding an affordable home, a single-family home, for a low-income person, the abatement is a bonus maybe, but it really doesn't create any affordability, because we're required to count what the taxes are going to be once it's done. So if you're looking to encourage single-family development that's affordable, this is not the tool. And I just want to make sure you're aware of that, because that's a challenge we have a lot of times. It's a benefit for people that have enough income. Thank you.
Hi, and dear lawmaker, Ward 1. I just wanted to point out, when we're talking about 80% affordable, Linda said that's just a normal income, and I think that is really important in this. So we're not really talking about affordable housing, we're not talking about low-income, we're not talking about poverty-level housing. So I believe the first speaker was correct when they said there wasn't any affordable housing requirements put into this. I think that's the most important thing. The interest of this is increasing the missing-middle housing, and so, single-family housing isn't really increasing that. I also want to point out that having a lot of units together is not necessarily a bad thing, as long as you are building up a community that has the resources that people need, is on those transit corridors, has like access to food, like we have food deserts in this city pretty bad, but it needs to actually be affordable, it needs to actually have those resources. So I think that is something that you all should consider when you continue this. Thanks.
If I could. All right, and Connie?
I just wanted to bring you up on the whole energy portion of it. If we are going to get to our numbers, this is for the new construction, and so I think it's something that we should look into for all-electric. A lot of things have changed in the last year, you know, from even the '70s, and I think there's a lot more things out there that would make it affordable for builders to build, doing all-electric, and for the residents to have all-electric as we keep going forward. So whether we defer it and we go back and look at what we could do to strengthen this, I would be supportive of that, but I do think we have to be realistic as to what we need to be doing going forward. This isn't, because we're not asking for rebuilding or whatever, it's for the new, the brand-new development, I believe is what that you're stating.
All right, Scott?
Mayor and council, so, if I could make a suggestion, that there is urgency in this decision in being able to add the missing middle, which is something that I have not heard any negativity on. And so I would also say that we don't want to, this is a living document, as many of our ordinances are, right? And so we don't have to get perfection at every point. There is every opportunity to pass what's in front of us now and address the all-electric over time, because that sounds like an awful lot of public interaction and interactions with the HBA and others. And so I could see that being a five, six-month conversation with the public and the experts on that. And so I would ask you for consideration of this being a very good first step in taking us down the path of more benefit to the missing middle to get the density we're looking at without overstepping the large density that without overstepping the large density that we know that a lot of the neighborhoods have given pushback to. So there's an awful lot of, a lot of effort into finding that middle ground in the policy with this, with the opportunity for further improvement on the all-electric, which, again, I would offer, is probably a half-year worth of conversations. And so the, and the last thing is that the builders are trying to plan out next calendar year construction season, and it would be incredibly helpful to have this decision at least made for this next year. So it'd be foregoing one year's of construction on the all-electric question. There's no doubt about that. But the rest of it could move forward with those, the improvements in here, which make the commercial easier, that index goes away as well. So there's, there's a lot of benefit to getting this step taken now.
And, and I said at the beginning, I will support this, but I too think of it as a living document, and I would hope that we would be able to come back and revisit, revisit it and have more discussion.
Is that a motion?
I would make a motion.
Is there any motion on the table?
Oh, that's correct.
Okay.
So I, I would rather, I guess I'd be willing to amend this, but I want a, I don't know that I want a five- or six-month discussion, because I think some of this was supposed to be part of the discussion here, and was sort of, for whatever reason, didn't happen in this five- or six-month discussion. But I, if we could have these discussions happen by April, so there can be a round of multiple discussions, but that gives us four months and some urgency, I would amend this, I would amend my motion and move, I'd be okay moving A, B, and C, but would like the discussion to happen within, within the timeframe so that we can have the appropriate council work sessions and stakeholder engagement, so that by April, by the first meeting in April, there is a presentation of an additional amendment to address this issue.
Okay.
So, Josh, is that separate from this, or this directing Scott to, and staff to come back with?
Dates and moments, because I think it sounds like a workshop in, in addition to everything else.
Possibly several, yeah.
Probably several workshops to go in depth.
But I heard passing A, B, and C.
I would, I would be okay passing A, B, and C, but having a specific timeframe within that four months to address the next item.
And is that, would that also be to waive the second and third readings also?
That's item C, is the waiver of the second.
And when does this go into effect? Because I know...
January 1st, but there is the opportunity for building permits to still be submitted for single-family homes in next year and constructed under the law.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Voting's in process.
Both in the odds.
Okay.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is item 38, on the vacation of apportions of Crocker Street, 12th Street, and Kiasakwa Way right-of-way adjoining 1201 Kiasakwa Way, and a conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment, door swing to Aust Real Estate LLC for $5,760. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. We'll quickly open it up and see if there's any germane comments regarding this vacation of Crocker Street, it looks like, for a permanent easement on door swing. All right, could we have a motion?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 38, 38A, and per...
pursuant to Rule 42A, waive the second and third reading.
Both in the odds.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Okay, move this to item 39, which is on an amendment of lease of the Botanical Center to the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden, Council of Communication, number 21-494. A is approval of the Third Amendment and Restated Urban Renewal Development Agreement with the Greater Des Moines Botanical Guard, Center Garden. B is to terminate Robert D. Ray Asian Garden Maintenance and Repair Agreements with the Des Moines Riverfront Development Authority. And C is the termination of the Chapter 28E Agreement with the Des Moines Riverfront Development Authority for Planning, Construction, and Maintaining Riverfront Facilities and Improvements in the downtown area. We'll open it up and see if there's any germane comments from the general public on this. Seeing none?
I, Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 39, A, B, and C, with the, with the comments that, a big shout-out to Ben Page, because he's worked on this for a long, long time, and it was a moving target. It seems like there was always something different happening, and now we have the Asian Gardens, and, and so there was a lot of work. So Ben really did a lot of work on that. Kim Perez, I know she's in the audience, she's the CEO, and she's done a great job bringing all this together. And Scott, because Scott, you and I started talking about this, what, four years ago? And so here we are today. It's a great amenity for our city, and it doesn't matter where you live in the city, the Botanical Garden is very easy to get to. So with that, I, those are my comments, and I just would move to approve A, B, and C.
Okay.
Both in the odds.
Mayor, real quick, and, and I'm very supportive of it, and thank you, everyone. Linda called out everybody, but we do have another amenity in the city that, the Blank Park Zoo, that I believe will be hopefully coming back to us and looking for some city grants when they do an extensive change to their entrance and some other things. So I just want everyone to keep that in mind, as we, as we work with one great amenity that we have, we also have another one that, that has a lot of needs and especially, that's a great attraction for our entire state. So I just want to make that clear, that there, as I, as I vote for this, and I'm very supportive of it, I hope that everyone that's at this table will be supportive as, as we move forward for, for the zoo and some of the changes that they've got coming forward.
Connie?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item 40. Item 40 is on the Skywalk HVAC Replacement Phase 4 Resolution Improving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, and Receive and File Bids in Designating the Lowest Responsive Responsible Bidder is Stein Heating and Cooling, Inc. Brian P. Stein is President, $218,000, Council Communication, number 21-488. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. We'll ask now if there's, the general public has any objections to the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation, and those will only be the comments that are going to be considered germane. So if we have one who would like to speak to the plans or specifications or form of documents?
Hi, Garland Armstrong, here in Des Moines, 3728 Hubble Avenue. Just want to make sure for this, about the, for the Skywalk, because are they going to like remodel it or make it a little bit more, more expanding it? Because my wife and I like to go through the Skywalk a whole lot when, especially with, with some shortcuts through it, and, and I'm just wanting to make sure, are they going to expand it, or, or they're going to try to demolish it or something, or, because we have, I have no idea, neither do I, because sometimes this, it's getting us a little confused of this because...
Okay, well, let's get you a comment here. Thanks for your question. I believe this is just for the HVAC, is it not, Mr. Manager?
That's correct. So it'd be comfort, if you will, within this segment of the Skywalk only, not an expansion.
Or a demolition.
Heating and cooling.
It's heating and cooling only.
Mayor, real, real quick, just over the last few days, and I've sent this off to Steve Neber, I've got extensive emails from, from, and I've included you in this, where we have multiple parts of the Skywalk system that needs, that needs some attention, and I'm not sure who is, who is responsible for this. I believe they're ours, is what my understanding is. You know, everything from poor ventilation to poor lighting, the walls are showing water leaks, missing carpet base, ceiling damage, very dirty carpet, no heat on cold days in the kaleidoscope, very dirty, folks are gathered in there, some folks are living in there, corridor of the NAP building...
So would you like to get an update?
Well, I've asked for an update, but I haven't, no, no one's answered my email, so I figured, since this was on the agenda, I would throw it out there, and hopefully someone will, someone will point out who's responsible for it and who's not responsible.
Right, and so in addition to the HVAC, Scott, I think what he's asking is that we get an update on the total condition of the Skywalk.
Yes, we can do that.
And we need to know who's responsible for it, because I know that in many sections of it, some of those buildings and some of those other organizations are responsible for various parts of it. So we've got to all come together and make sure we get this cleaned up.
That is correct. There are private sections, and there are public sections that are ours.
It's my understanding, there's been multiple meetings, and no one's taken responsibility for any of these fixes. And we've been involved with it, the private industry's been involved with it, and no one is stepping up to, to make the changes that we need. So I'm hoping that we'll get some type of answer and get it figured out.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if I could with a, just, just one question. So generally, if the Skywalk goes over this, over a street, that's our responsibility? Is that in broad terms?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So if it has no heat, who's responsible for it?
Which, again, it depends on the private, if it's a private section or a public section that goes over a street. We, we are responsible for the heating on the Skywalk that goes over the street right-of-way.
Well, I assume a Skywalk typically goes over a street, doesn't it? That's why we have a Skywalk.
No, it goes through buildings, and you mentioned a couple other properties that are private property. So it's a good mix.
The parallel corridor that's like the hallway on the exterior of the building, that's the whoever owns the building.
This is a very detailed list, and I've sent it to engineering. I think they're responsible for it, and I also included you in this, and I'm hoping to get some type of answer before the meeting, but no one's even responded, that they got the email. So I'm, I'm hoping to, somebody at least respond and get us something.
Yep, so we're going to try to get that update, but I think in this point, we need to get the HVAC fixed. Because as Joe points out, there are certain sections that I think that's not even working. So that takes care of at least his part, but let's have a quick follow-up on the other, just to let us understand what's going on. So do we have a motion?
We've got one person from the public who's...
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adam Townan, Ward 3, 50309. I live downtown, and I use the Skywalk a bit. So I don't know how necessary this is, there's a lot of spots where you can see the leaks, kind of like Joe Gatto mentioned, and, yeah, there's parts that aren't heated. It's a huge open public space, partially public space that's really underutilized, and I hope that this can lead to more utilization. But my main question about the actual plan is that, I see this is like Phase 4, will any of this planned for Phase 4 be complete this winter? So we have heating this winter, and we could potentially use the Skywalk for any sort of public things, like a heating center or anything else this winter?
Checking on that right now. I do not know the timing.
Yeah.
If they could come forward, that would be helpful, too, to ask that question.
So the germane point here is, are we going to get it working to keep it, keep it warm for the people that need it, that sometimes need to come in off the street? Steve?
That's why we have a...
All right.
I'm a mayor, members of City Council, Steve Neber, City Engineer. Regarding the question, the HVAC replacement is specifically for two Skywalk bridges, and, and those bridges, that, that work will be done next year, so it won't be done before, I mean, it, it takes time to order and procure their equipment there. I'm not aware that the HVAC in those two specific bridges is out. But just for clarification, the city owns and is responsible for the maintenance of the bridges, which is the piece that goes over the public right-of-way. The city is also responsible for the maintenance of some of the corridors when they go around city parking garages, so, or city-owned facilities. Otherwise, when it's a corridor that goes through a private building, that private building owner is responsible.
For the HVAC also?
There, for everything, yep, correct, yeah. So the building itself does provide the heating and ventilation for the, the private corridor, so like the...
I hate to get off track, but if that's not working, how do we get them to fix it?
Yep, and so that's what we've worked for, and I received the, an email from you, Councilman Gatto, today, and so I've been working on the response for, for that. There's a whole list of, of repairs, and so that, that is, that is a challenge, so we are working, we've been started, as of July, we started doing quarterly assessments as the city. It, it used to be that the Skywalk Association kind of tried to police themselves and, and push the private entities to, to do those repairs. That obviously hasn't been working, so that, so we're trying to step in as the city. The challenge we have, to be honest, is, is what is the enforcement rules and policies? You know, it's not like we have a, a policy and rules and set like we do for other ended things, like sidewalks, where we could say, well, if you have a defective sidewalk, that's your responsibility, you have to repair it within three to six months. We don't have those restrictive timelines for the Skywalk that, that I'm aware of. So we're trying to just work with the property owners, and I'm, I'm sending a whole list of, of responses to your email on the different property owners we've been working with, trying to get...
So you're saying there's no enforcement, that we have a policy in place, there's no enforcement to make them do any of this work?
So actually, so there are independent agreements, and I believe over 30 of them, that often, yeah, that often only cover a segment at a time with each private property owner, so, depends on which segment we're talking about, whether or not there's any good agreement with enforcement.
Right. Well, maybe we should come back and take a look at our policy for the entire Skywalk system, then, if that's the case. Because if, if I have a list of seven of them, each of them with five or six different things wrong with them, at, at a minimum, and we have no, no way, if this is a private person, to take care of any of this stuff, and a lot of it is, it's, the HVAC is broken in there, then why are, why do we even have them? That doesn't make much sense.
Yeah, but as far as the city facility, the ones that are responsible by the city...
Ultimately, we are responsible, though, Steve, it is our city. I mean, we, it makes us look bad, no matter if we have 100 different agreements with them. Ultimately, the perception is, the seven of us are ultimately is where the buck stops. So we are getting these emails saying, what are you going to do about it? And, but I'm going to answer them that we don't really have any enforcement. So we need to take a look at those policies, and let's try to get it figured out.
But, well, but most of that is done, if I understand, those are via 28E, right? So we can't unilaterally change those to give us the enforcement authority on those...
So, yes, and...
If that's my understanding of it.
They're all 28E agreements that we've got with all these individual property owners.
They are agreements, they're not necessarily, because some even predate 28E agreements. There's some that are very old.
They're contracts.
And, and I think the other thing to remember, the council needs to remember, is that these are voluntary agreements, they all have cancellation rights on relatively short periods of time. So it...
Like they can just close it if they don't want to maintain it?
They can close their part of the Skywalk, yes, sir. If, they have to give notice, and there's a period of time in the agreements, and I don't remember off the top of my head what it is, but that would be one, one way, if they don't want to do it, they could give us notice that they're going to close their portion of the Skywalk. And that, that has, I mean, we've had that happen just in the last few years, where a business or two have decided they don't want to participate in a Skywalk program and close their building, give them notice.
Okay.
And that's the sensitive nature to all this, why we don't really have the...
Okay, well, that's, I guess that's good to know. I'm not sure whoever would have agreed to those type of agreements, but, you know, I guess we're stuck with them now.
But I do hear from the council, and I just last week talked with, with some of the Skywalk... the Skywalk Association members about pulling together a group to talk through how to have the same terms, the same agreement with the entire Skywalk system. And they are open to that conversation. Now would be the time to do that. Now, it would have been better to have it years ago, but they are willing to sit down and, and talk through that.
Okay.
And obviously, we'd, we'd have a partnership and others involved in that.
Yeah, I think there's enough folks that, you know, with the downtown partnership and business community that I, I think we need to probably come to a better agreement than.
Yes.
A heavy hand saying, you either do this, and they say, well, no, I'm just going to close my Skywalk then. That would be very sad at best. I guess that's the best words I can say about it.
So Scott, I think we need another item for a work session to get updated on it and then look at our options to make sure our Skywalk.
Consolidate.
Yeah, is, is in good shape and consolidate the agreements. So if somebody gives a motion to approve this, let's get our portion of the HBAC fixed and let's move forward.
I'll move that motion. I'll move item 40 and 40A and then I'll look forward to the discussion at a work session.
Does it, yes?
I'm sorry. I thought I had done it. Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. That completes the, the hearings at 5:59. Let's go back to item 6B. Public improvements, 6 is under, so ordering construction of Pennsylvania Avenue, reconstruction from north of East University Avenue to East Washington Avenue, receiving a bid December 7th of '21 and setting our date of hearing of January 10th of '22. The engineer's estimate for this work is $1,650,000. Council Communication number 21-496. Councilmember Westergaard.
Ms. Mayor, I would just ask that 6B be continued until the next meeting.
That, then let's, let's, I'd just like to see everyone's vision of what they're thinking and what they want to do. So I'll move item 22, but I, I just, I wanted to kind of share some thoughts about what I'm hearing and, and what I'm seeing and.
Well, Joe, I can add to it. We had the floods of 2018 and that water just poured right through the IV there at Harding Hills. And we came back, all they wanted to do is get the place back in business. And we came back with the same thing. They wanted to have islands in there. They, they found that some of the concrete was just a little bit off and had to make it all ADA compliant and everything is starting to go, add up. We just about derailed the whole project. So I think we need to have further discussions on that before we start scaring away people to the suburbs.
So Mayor and council, we've recognized this as an issue. It's scheduled for December 15th, I believe. Does that sound right?
As a workshop or something?
Or 20th. 20th as a workshop for, no, what this is, is a trigger.
Is that going to delay the, the December 6th hearing?
No, I understand that this will go forward. I'm talking about the broader discussion.
Okay.
This is a.
I just want to.
So that, that is scheduled for December, it must be 20th.
Wait, I'm not quite positive what we're voting on here. Are we voting?
Setting the date of hearing.
Just setting the date and.
And then we'll, we'll have the.
Perhaps give them a waiver on the number of, is it 27 islands or something like that, Joe?
Have a broader discussion in the work session to talk about. Gotcha. What triggers on existing buildings as opposed to new construction? What triggers requirements like this?
Generally.
Okay.
Generally.
All right.
But some of these things are, I'll save it for the work session.
Connie?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. This takes us now, I think, to 27I, which is approving, and Councilmember Gatto pulled this one as well, an exception to the procurement ordinance for proposals processed for good cause in approving amendment to extend the contract with Permar Security Services for onsite security services. Council Communication number 21-505. Councilmember Gatto.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I pulled this off because I'm, I'm concerned, I guess, what we're going to do, what, what's our vision for, for all of our buildings? I mean, are we looking at security, armed security for all of our buildings? Are we looking at greeters that are just going to give information as people come in and they're just eyes on the door? And I've had conversations with Scott earlier today and, and I just, I, if we're going to spend $150,000 for, for, you know, a third party and then we're going to go train other individuals, I don't even, I don't understand what we're doing. I know we got rid of Conley. That was probably one of the better things that we've done. But I, I need to know where, where we're going with this and what, what is our intention and what type of problems have we had to, to spur this? I know we've got a lot more security than eight years ago when I walked through this building the first time. I mean, you can't get into a lot of folks' office, you can't even get upstairs sometimes as you go through this, through this door. So I, I just, I, I guess I, I need to have a better understanding of where we're going, what we're doing, and kind of where everybody's at with all of this.
Scott?
So we can absolutely have that conversation and delay this action if that's where the council wants to go. The, the simple high-level answer is, these services are to replace what, what Conley had been providing at three sites, three different buildings. I may have misunderstood that the council's desire at that point was to turn that and transition that into an in-house security slash greeting service for our, for our offices. So there, there's every opportunity to, to sit down with you and, and talk through all of you what, what those options are and where we're headed. The intent was really to mirror what we've seen the last several months with city staff. And that is, as you might imagine, value in, in two fronts. It's managing the doors that are open to the public, for which we do have full access up here with engineering staff with concerns, once, once they are let in through the door. So we've, we've, we've found an awful lot of value in, in having the security, given the, the history of where violence has occurred in municipal buildings.
But we haven't had any type of violence.
We've had, absolutely, we have had physical threats on site. And unfortunately, that's an increasing concern. So I can share all of that with you as well of what, and some of you have, have had those same email concerns and, and things of that nature that we'll talk through.
I'll move to continue 27I until we have some further information.
Does it, yes?
Could you give a little more detail as to what kind of information you're looking for? I'll vote for it, but I think.
I, I think we, we definitely need to sit down and have a, have a conversation, whether it's, you know, a workshop or whether it's, it's privately with two or three of us, because I, I'm not exactly sure what, what we're looking for. I know the county, when you walk into a county building to pay your taxes or get that, you know, they do have, Pope County Sheriff's sitting there. My understanding, they're retired, they're retired officers or something like that. You know, I, I, I mean, if we're looking for security, then let's have security. If we're looking for someone to just be a greeter, then let's just hire a greeter. But you can't train somebody to be a greeter in security. And that's where I, I'm, I don't understand where we're going with it. And so once I have a better understanding, then I'll vote for yes or no for it. But right now, this isn't really telling me much, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I, I think that we could define it maybe, and let's talk about that, Scott. I think some of us who've been in county buildings lately, it's like going through TSA just to get in there. And, you know, I'm not sure how far into that we want to go. We've got, you know, obviously a detector here, but, you know, we're not doing the full winding and everything else that in some of the buildings Pope County is using. So Scott, let's have that further discussion. And look forward to it.
Just for clarification, I thought what we were talking about tonight was just to continue on with Permar. That's what it's going to cost us to have Permar just until we had that discussion about what we wanted to do. And it was my understanding that we were looking at hiring our own staff, but they have to go through civil service, and that takes a while, so.
Entire job descriptions have to be.
Right.
We don't even have a job description for these things. So we're voting, I mean, if we want to vote to keep Permar here and just to have Permar, then, then I guess.
It's just for limited.
We can vote on that, but I don't even, I mean, we don't have a job description of what, what we're going to do. We're talking about sending them to civil service. Are they going to carry a weapon? Are they not going to carry a weapon? I mean, what are we doing?
But.
That's being drafted.
I thought it was my understanding that Permar was just temporary. It was just until we got everything else in place and then they would, we would cancel that contract.
So how much is the $150,000 until when? Until May 9th of 2022? Is that when this is supposed to be for?
If not sooner. If we can get it done sooner, it would be sooner than that. But that is enough through the end of May.
This is Connie. Has the analysis been that, is this a more effective or cost-effective method is to keep Permar and then hiring our own or whatever? So I think we do need more discussion.
But I think we need to keep them in place in the interim while we sort out where we're going.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we want to keep them in place, that's fine, but I, I just don't, I, I don't know what, where we're going with this. And so for me to vote for something that I don't have all of the details, it's problematic and I just, I refuse to do that. So if we want to vote to, to keep them here until May 9th, but I would like to see, is it more cost-effective just to have them to be here, a third party? Because are they going to be liable when something happens? Because when we hire somebody and something happens, Mr. Lester, we're going to be liable for it, correct?
Correct.
Are we liable with the third party? Or are they liable if something happens?
It, I mean, I can't tell you in every situation.
I understand.
Depending on what the allegation is in the complaint as to what the inappropriate or, or whatever the problem behavior was. I mean, depending on the circumstance, we, we may still be liable, maybe jointly and severally liable. Many of our procurement contracts require them to carry insurance and identify the city. I haven't seen the one.
Right. But that's, that's exactly what I, that's, that, those, those are the type of terms that I want to see. And there's just not enough information in here for me to, to, to vote. That's the only reason. If you guys want to keep it here until the 9th, then.
Well, or, or up until a point where we.
Have the conversation with.
Have the conversation. I fully understand with a full analysis. But I think we need to keep it in place and we need a motion to do that.
Your Honor, you already had a vote, seven to zero to continue it.
We have to have a motion to reconsider at this point.
All right. Could we have a motion to reconsider? Does anybody?
Sure. I'll move to reconsider 27I.
All right.
Now you would need to vote on that.
We need to vote on that motion?
Do we open the hearing up? Because there's somebody that wants to speak.
I see that.
No hearing.
There's no hearing, but.
Okay.
Where's requesting public comment? You guys can vote on it if you want to accept public comment.
He can say no.
Who's talking?
Who are we voting on? Motion to reconsider the item.
Vote to reconsider.
Everybody voted to continue it already, so you'd need a motion to reconsider.
All right. I think the, what I'm hearing is the interest in keeping.
Did Connie vote?
Yes.
Okay. Then it's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay. So now it's, we've reopened the consideration to allow the manager, I believe, to continue Permar until times that we get all the information back and we're able to now analyze and give the information to Joe and the rest of us, quite frankly, as to what the ask is, what we're doing, how we're doing it, and what the cost is. And we would continue this until that time that you would bring it back. Is that right?
Yeah, sure. I mean, whatever we want to do. I mean, it's really unfortunate that it's even on the agenda and we don't have that information.
Make the motion call.
I'll move adoption of 27I.
The indirect city manager to expeditiously get back with it in detail.
Does it, yes?
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay. That takes us now to item 41. These are first consideration of ordinances, cementing Chapter 114 of Municipal Code regarding traffic regulation changes to increase the fine for parking trucks, trailers and semi-trailers in residential districts. Council Communication number 21-501. Any discussion, council? Motion?
Yes, Mayor, I brought this up about a couple of months ago. We started seeing an increase in, in tractor, tractor trailers parking on residential streets. And we researched the code, found that it's only a $15 fine. You know, so people look at you and say, 15 bucks is cheap. So, and, and then there was confusion in dispatch whether it was an offense or not. So this, this lays it out, puts a, a good bite of a fine in there and, you know, we'll keep our streets in good working order. We won't have to semi's tearing them up and leaving them overnight, creating obstructions on the side of getting around them as well. So I'll be happy to move item 41.
Does it, yes?
First considered.
Did you want to waive the?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Pursuant to 42A, I'd like to waive the second, third rings as well. Sorry.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
You're going to work with me on that one.
Item 42, cementing sections 90, item 42, cementing sections 90-1, 90-2, 90-35, Article 3, 90-61, 90-62, and adding section 90-4 relating to approval of procurement and emergency procurement for municipal housing agency. A is the final consideration. The ordinance above the waiver is requested by Chris Johansson, the Neighborhood Services Department Director and requires six votes.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just had something for maybe discussion or continuation on this. So my understanding is that the way it works right now is the Housing Services Board can, has essentially unlimited discretion in terms of the amount before it would come to council. This puts a cap on that has not previously existed, but I was sort of surprised that there hadn't been a cap. And I wonder if 500,000 is the right amount or not? And so just wanted to, to flag that. It's, I think, more than in other areas where, where the council does not, does not see an item. And so now that we're identifying it, I just wondered if 500,000 is the right, right number or not? And if others are not concerned about that and are fine with the 500, that, that's, I suppose, fine, but I, I just had some question about that.
Scott?
And councilman, I totally understand the concern, the 500,000 was meant to be able to handle the property that the city owns for affordable housing, to be able to handle repairs, upgrades of the existing without adding units. And oftentimes, we are now seeing, you know, HVAC, exterior window replacements that are in excess of 100 or even $200,000. So there is somewhat of an arbitrary amount at the 500,000 level, but I would urge strongly that the amounts stay above at least 250,000. that the amounts stay above at least 250,000 because we would see quite a bit of those types of repairs. They're routine for the Housing Service Board to address and to put forward for repairs and replacement. And so anything between that 250 and 500 would be helpful to set a cap.
Any thoughts, discussion?
I mean, I guess my preference would be to have a cap at 250, and then if we're, if we're getting too much in the way of routine stuff as a consequence of that, then we can revisit it.
Just, yeah, and to be clear, then, anything above that would come to the council sitting as the.
Housing Board.
Housing Board, I wanted to get that right, municipal housing board.
Right. Is everybody okay with that?
250?
All right, that's the motion. Connie?
It has a final.
Both in yes.
I might, just to be clear, the, the motion is to amend the ordinance that's before you by changing the cap from 500,000 to 250,000. Is it also to, to approve A for final reading upon that amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 43 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. A is a code modification to designate a 25 mile an hour maximum speed limit on Ingersoll Avenue from 42nd Street to 59th Street and modify parking restrictions due to the Ingersoll Avenue from 42nd Street to Polk Boulevard construction project, which now appears to be complete, by the way. Council Communication number 21-503. Any thoughts on that? If not, do we have a motion?
Well, I would be happy to move item 43 and 43A and pursuant to Rule 42A, move to waive the second and third reading. I want to thank Councilmember Voss. I mean, this is another piece towards moving, improving public safety on these roads, and this is one of the things that I think Move DSM helps provide us really helpful guidance in terms of how we make these roads safer for, for all users. The road design is a piece of that, but the, getting the right speed limit, once the, the road has been redesigned, is, is another piece of that. And so happy that we're getting this change, and I know Councilmember Voss did a lot to just keep this on our radar and keep it moving, so appreciate that as well.
Well, Josh, thank you, and I think it's already posted at 25 miles an hour, so.
Both in yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 44 is amending municipal code by adding sections 2-71 and 2-1060 relating to the cultural competency training for members of the council and members of the boards and commissions. Council Communication number 21-506. Scott, did you want? Item 44? And we have begun this already, right? Okay.
I'll move it, Your Honor. I'll waive the second and third reading pursuant to Rule 42A.
All right.
Both in yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 45 is amending sections 62-1, 62-42, 62-72, 62-103, 62-137, and adding section 62-136.1, Article 7, section 62-172, 62-173, and Article 7, section 62-191 relating to additional power of the Human Rights Commission to engage in voluntary community mediation, additional human rights, illegal discriminatory practices, and amended exemptions and definitions. Council Communication number 21-506. Any comment or motion here?
I'll move item 45, Your Honor.
Both in yes.
And I will waive the second and third reading pursuant to Rule 42A. I appreciate all the hard work that the Human and Civil Rights Commission has done through this. I know losing Joshua and Minish stepped in and, and did a fantastic job, so I appreciate all the hard work that all of them have done. They're all volunteers and they have all given their time and did a good job.
Well, and accepting this additional responsibility to go through on this, so.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Mayor, if I could, since a few names were thrown out, Malcolm has put in an incredible amount of time into this, our Assistant City Manager and the Legal Department, a lion chair of this, so I really want to thank Larry and others for this, so very appreciative for everyone involved.
Thanks, Larry.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 46, amending the municipal code of the city of Des Moines by adding section 70-66.1 relating to false reports to or communications with public safety entities. Council Communication number 21-506. Any comment?
I'll move item 46.
Okay, item 46.
And I will waive the second and third reading pursuant to 42A.
Both in yes.
Yep.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. We're now going to move to our communications and public speaking items. So for those persons wishing to speak tonight, under the public speaking items of the agenda, we will be calling on those who have registered to speak, and all speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, which I think a lot of you have through your sign up. And each, this evening, we've got 11 speakers, and we'll receive up to two minutes to make their comments. Please keep your own time, because at the end of the two minutes, the clerk will announce time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we'll move immediately to the next speaker. And we appreciate your comments, and we want to encourage all of our residents to be respectful of the others' viewpoints that are maybe different from their own. While you may certainly disagree with that viewpoint, I want to remind everyone that the council's rules provide that any comments that are slanderous will result in that speaker being barred from further comment. As the presiding officer, I'll determine whether or not that's happening and whether it's slanderous or not. Fair warning, arguing with the presiding officer about the determinations on this matter isn't permitted, and doing so will additionally be considered disruptive and result in speaker being barred from further comments and being required to leave. So let's go ahead and open up. Our first speaker this evening is Peyton Schumaker.
Hello, Peyton Schumaker, Ward 1, 50310. Actually, just came here to say a few thank yous to you guys. So first, I want to thank you for grossly underestimating the number of people who agree with our message on wanting to defund Des Moines Police Department, so thank you for that. Thank you for calling us a vocal minority and just assuming that some silent majority was on your side. I want to thank you for that as well. To my former city council member, Bill Gray, I want to thank you for not seeing my sister Indira's campaign, our people's campaign against you as a threat and losing so spectacularly that I never have to address you as my city councillor again. Thank you so much for that. And then for having me arrested for trespassing in the city council meeting. I want to thank you guys for that so much. And then to Scott Sanders and Mayor Frank County specifically, I really just wanted to thank you personally for coming to my trial today, just to make sure that you can enforce your fascist rules by making me pay a $300 fine. I just want to thank you so much for showing up for that, so thanks.
Abby Banks.
Hi, yeah, Abby Banks, 50311. I use she/her pronouns, and for once, you actually pronounced my last name right, so round of applause there. I'm a resident of the Drake neighborhood, and I honestly don't really know where to start today. Do I start with the fact that I even have to be standing here in front of you in the first place despite the fact that we're very much still in a global pandemic, as much as we would all like to pretend that we're not? Because you guys refuse to have a virtual public comment section, so myself and other immunocompromised and other, other people are not able to participate in democracy, so just pat yourselves on the back for that. That is ableist, but you guys have proven time and time again that you are ableist. We see that public comment, we see that in the fact that large print agendas are not readily available, and when they are rejected, I saw firsthand this afternoon, they are not provided. So where else should I go? Maybe I should talk about how I'm coming directly from Peyton's trial, where Peyton, a community member, was arrested at the city council meeting for merely trying to exercise her First Amendment rights. So that is the community member that you, Frank, and Scott just testified against, and yes, in case you guys were wondering, your mayor did testify against a community member, one of their own constituents, actually. So maybe it would actually be better if I started by talking about just how badly Bill Gray lost to Indira last week or week before last. There's so many options. But no matter what grievance I begin with, it all boils down to one thing, and that's that you are all truly vile people, and if we have the same understanding of what your job as city council members are.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next speaker. The next speaker is Carol Maher.
I live in Ward 3, zip code 50312. The cultural competency training that was approved tonight for the council members, boards, and commissions appears to be a one-time-only thing. I recommend that that should be annual and that a department is responsible for tracking compliance. It doesn't appear in the ordinance that it will be tracked. Also, on November 4th, there was a news release that went out lauding DMPD regarding the 30 by 30 pledge that they had signed, which says that 30% of the officers will be women by 2030. We're currently at 13. It wasn't clear in the news release or on the website how that progress will be tracked, reported, communicated, and shared with the public. And I know that at least two council members have asked City Manager Sanders to provide a review of the culture and climate in DMPD, and it would be good to know the status of that and who is the outside firm providing this review, as it's been a little quiet on the DMPD front. And I just wanted to let you know that they're not forgotten, even though there's been silence. Thank you.
Adam Kellin.
Hello, my name is Adam Kellin. I use he/him pronouns, 50309, in Ward 3. So a few different things. First off, we really need a virtual option. We are still in a pandemic, and it's a huge accessibility issue. Other towns and other counties and whatnot have provided that. It's definitely feasible. It's definitely something that council should be looking into. And also, we can see, like today, Councilmember Bozen is virtual, and it's weird if the councilmembers can be virtual, we can't. It's just an odd discrepancy there. Also, in terms of accessibility and what you're doing to reach out to people, I know that recently there was a private developer roundtable where developers were invited to some sort of private meeting. I'd love to see anything like that, but for residents or people that are just not developers, we've seen nothing like that since 2020. There's been some community meetings, but nothing that's really a town hall or roundtable specifically for residents or renters or anything like that. So it was unfortunate to see developers get that. Something that, actually, Councilmember Regatto brought up, 27I being on the agenda, and specifically on the consent agenda, was very weird, because that means our city manager is putting items that are controversial, even within the council, on the consent that council doesn't even really know about. We're saying that things are putting on, being put on the consent agenda that just do not belong there at all. It's a very frequent thing. Yeah, that's $150,000 for private security being put on the consent agenda and an exemption to the proposal. There's usually a proposal process that's also being canceled, and that really scares me, because the same thing was done for Conley in the first place, and we know how that went. I don't know much about Pirmar, but I would sure hope that if members of the public have concerns, they can talk about it at the meetings, that we don't enter into a contract like it with Conley. It just seems like the city, and specifically Scott Sanders apparently, because the rest of the council doesn't seem to really know what's going on, is afraid of the residents in having this private security. It's, it's just really weird and really uncomfortable being a resident and seeing that happen. Also, the trials, as mentioned, Peyton's trial was today. There's been over 80 trials lost and curd towards the side of protest, and protest won.
All right, our next speaker is Denver Foote. Denver? She here? Carrie Gosnell. Carrie? Carrie? D'Artagnan Brown.
My name is D'Artagnan Brown. I live in the Riverbend neighborhood, the best neighborhood. I'm a musician, and this is a theme. I, I love our city, I love everybody here, but I see there's a lot of things that are starting to go a little amiss that we, hopefully, we can get a handle on quickly. The police in this town have cost all of us a lot of money in the last, whatever period you want to take, too much money in undue arrests and undue brutality, undue harassment. The Des Moines Police Department has refused to meet with many members of the community who've asked to meet. The city manager hasn't made that much, hasn't made that very easy. Nonetheless, we keep trying. But at this point, we see that the Des Moines Police Department has almost literal disdain for the community members. At the same time, now we know that they have disdain for our female police officers. That, phew, that is something I hope we all give us pause, because what does that indicate? I'll cut it short and just say, we know what that indicates. And so I think we, you can all do yourselves a big favor in the community by appointing independent, non-local, non-locally managed investigators to understand what in the heck is going on with our, the people who are supposed to be protecting and serving us. Not only are they abusing the community, they're abusing their own people. Thank you.
Laurel Clinton.
Laurel Clinton, 1190 10th Street, Des Moines. And I'm going to say that I know that the city of Des Moines, the council, wears a lot of hats. And tonight, I want to refer to your BLM hat, Bureau of Labor Land Management. And this is in regards to the Near North Side Rec Center that you allocated $12 million for. And I don't know who decided to call it the Near North Side Center, but it was disconnected to the Grub Y, I believe, on purpose. And a lot of people that live directly across the street from the Grub Y did not recognize the Near North Side Center as a new rec center and a project in their community. So there was a lack of information provided to the, the community. So there was a lack of information provided to the community. And when you ask about it, the first thing I hear from council members is how expensive it is to build a pool in a rec center in my community. But I need you guys to understand that there's an expense attached to my community every time we have to leave it to get resources. And this is the same council that gave Wesley Acres an easement to build an indoor swimming pool at the chagrin of their neighbors because it gave the seniors in their community walkability. And you guys agreed how important indoor services were for the seniors in South of Grant. So I want you to be that excited when you put all that effort into making sure that our community has an indoor swimming pool. I was told by one council member, Connie, to use North High. I called North High to make an appointment. They are not seeing the public. That's off the record. So please don't...
Deb Franklin.
Deb Franklin, 1063 40th Street. If I go over like 30 seconds, please allow it. This is my fifth time here, and I'd like to kind of be done tonight. As previously mentioned, this perpetrator, Robert Franklin, is able to hack into any device. Just this past week, he was able to hack into the Des Moines Public School District and change my ID number to that of another person. I'm also providing proof to the council of this hacking into my Urbendale school email. We really need help here. All the suburbs have cybercrime. I really want you guys to vote funding for the Des Moines Police Department to establish a cybercrime unit. On another note, I want to thank the council for the work you've done regarding the social profiling issue due to our local group of community organizers listening to our black citizens and the needs they brought forth regarding being socially profiled. My hope is that the council will continue to move forward to post signs that, excuse me, every place of a private business within the city of Des Moines. These signs need to direct anyone who feels they may have been socially profiled in any way, including but not limited to skin color, culture, and faith, and the steps to take of how to file a report with the police regarding this. However, the person filing the report needs to be thoroughly background-checked due to so many refugees in the city to establish they are not aligned with the foreign government seeking to undermine the US government or from a political party that does not support democracy and our freedoms. I believe that this needs to most definitely become a city ordinance, and that violation of it after positive proof has been established become a felony. We believe much of the social profiling specifically affecting black citizens and...
All right, we need to move on to our next speaker, Bridget Peterson. Bridget Peterson. Next, Ruth Thompson.
I'm Ruth Thompson, and I live in Ward 3. I'm also the vice chair of the Access Advisory Board, and the reason that I'm bringing this issue to you is because the advisory board has been discussing it amongst ourselves for a good bit of time, and we have had no action or any move toward resolution. As it stands right now, the board has seven expired terms, and two slots are open because of resignations. Four of the seven who are expired are not eligible for reappointment just yet. And so I'm going to be sending around via email a chart that shows where the problems lie. Also, in addition to just kind of open slots and expired terms, we have folks who have managed to miss four meetings this year. We've only had six due to not having plans or other reasons, but they've managed to miss four of six meetings, even though they were all Zoom meetings. So I would appreciate if you would, I'll send these tomorrow. When you get my email, please read this and start assigning folks to these seats. We take our job really, really seriously, and we're sometimes made to feel as though we're not taken seriously by the city. So I hope that we'll see some action toward filling these seats. I just want to add that the ADA is not an added burden. Lots of shoppers at the Harding Hill Hy-Vee are people with disabilities, and they specifically use wheelchairs. I know this because I work in that neighborhood, and I'm in there probably every weekday. So, you know, the ADA was passed 25 years ago, and it's not something that we can continue to ease into. That said, I hope that we can perhaps add disability to the cultural competency training. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to all of our speakers. Could we have a motion to receive and file their comments, please? So moved? It's been moved? If everybody would vote?
Does in the...
All right.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, all received and filed, so thank you very much. Until next time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.